Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'll call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on February 15th at 7:02 PM. Thank you for everybody coming out with us this evening. We will start our meeting as per usual with our opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Justin Chapa in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
And now, if you wouldn't mind, please silencing all cell phones and electronic devices. And if you would please join me in a moment of silence and please keep in your thoughts and prayers, all of those touched by tragedy in Parkland, Florida yesterday. Thank you. All right. This work session tonight, just a couple of items on the agenda. The first one is program presentation, the Financial Futures Committee. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Rice. And this evening, we'd like to share with you the Financial Futures Committee presentation. And before I call Cindy up, and you can come up, Cindy, I would like to, before we even start, thank the committee, and I know Cindy will and the board will, but thank the committee. I was able to join many of their meetings, and they did an outstanding job and took their responsibility very, very seriously and asked a number of outstanding questions. And so, very pleased with the point that we are in terms of their report. And so Cindy will kick us off with introducing.
Board took a great step last year in updating, changing, completely changing the charge to our Financial Futures Committee. And I think you will see this evening that that move, those changes, has resulted in an outstanding product that will have significant impact on our district moving forward. In years past, the Financial Futures Committee focused really on just the upcoming year budget, although we called it Financial Futures Committee. It was, as someone said just earlier this evening, it was very much the near term. And so, this committee has evolved and grown over time. I think we recognized, all of us over the last couple of years, that given the way that the district had matured with its own strategic plan and the way, the direction that we were headed, that we likewise had outgrown that old model. And so, I think what you'll see this evening is something that will help guide us and help us shape where we head in the coming years in terms of our financial planning. So this evening, we have several of our members here. We have the FFC chairperson, and I'm going to get out of the way very quickly. I will just introduce David Willbanks as the chair. I will say that, as Dr. Kavasos said, we want to thank this committee. They met six times to process information, and we had a number of people on staff, senior staff made presentations, and we tackled some really big topics, as you'll hear about. We tackled budget and enrollment management, compensation, legislative activities. And throughout, there was very thoughtful discussion. People put a great deal of effort and energy into preparing for the meetings and to participating in conversation at our meetings. And so, this group has digested a lot of very complex information, and they have put the pieces together in a way that has some very overarching effects and recommendations for us that will guide us, as I said earlier, for many, many years. So with that, I'm going to call on David Willbanks, and he will make the FFC presentation, and then we're all available to help answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Dr. Rice, Dr. Kavasos, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm pleased to be back yet again to give the FFC report to the board. I do want to echo what Cindy said. I think, I just realized it was two years ago, almost, when I gave the last one. And as you guys recall, I kind of went off script and spoke from the heart that, okay, the sophistication level of the district has gone like this, but FFC hasn't kept up. And I really challenge you, and I think a lot of the older members of the board, that were on some of the older FFC committees, were ready for a change, and you guys knocked it out of the park. You came back with a new charge, updated charge. And to echo again what Cindy said, I think you'll be pleased with the output from what we were able to do. We put a lot of hard work in. We had a great committee, and I want to thank the committee members for being here tonight. But let's jump in. I want to go ahead and kind of give you an overview and review the charge mainly for those listening at home who might not be familiar with FFC. But the purpose of this committee is to give the stakeholders of the community input on one of the most important things in our district, and that's not just our budget, but with our new charge, really that long-range financial planning and to tackle those big financial topics that affect our district. They affect our teachers and our students, and they affect us as taxpayers. So kudos to the board for being forward-thinking and giving all the stakeholders of the community input on something as important as the budget. Our committee is made up of a very diverse group of individuals from all four corners of this district, from all of the high school clusters. But not only that, they cover all the different stakeholders, as I mentioned, from regular old taxpayers to, and by old, I don't mean old in age, but just plain old taxpayers to administrators of, in our, that work in our district, to the teachers. We had a number of great teachers. They represent a lot of the teacher organization and professional organizations of the district, and parents like myself. So there are 18 members. We had two alternates this year. Unfortunately, we had two members that had to roll off for various reasons, which meant both of our alternates were pulled up from the bench, and they were up for the task and contributed and did miss a beat. So kudos to Ms. Moss and Mr. Schottman for stepping up to the plate. And I believe we kind of, you know, one of the things that I advise you with is, we probably need a few more alternates going forward, and I think going in the next round, we, you guys have addressed that. Five, good. I think we'll be set. But as Cindy said, it's kind of revamped. In years past, we met in the spring, late winter and early spring. We had a very rushed agenda, and it was very taxing to come up with quality recommendation to you guys in a timely fashion, to give you time to vote on and act on those recommendations and include them in the upcoming budget. Now, those time pressures are off. Instead of disbanding every year, we're a standing committee. We serve two-year terms. This being the first year, half of us, as you can see, are serving one-year terms. And I think this is a good testament to how great the new format works, is over two-thirds of the members that were unlucky to serve a one-year term this go-around have re-upped to serve another two-year term. So this new format was, I think, highly effective, very rewarding, very engaging for the committee members on staff, and it shows because, hey, they want more. So kudos to you guys. Again, for those at home, I'll briefly go through the charge. The charge is quite extensive, but I'll kind of concentrate on the bulk of what our work was to be concentrated on. And there's really six sections to our task at hand. The first one was to look at external, internal data relating to Texas school finance and Texas public education, even including accountability system, election laws for bonds, and how those affect our tax rates, our budget, and our long-range financial plans. This district is very disciplined now. We filter everything through the lens of our strategic plan, which guides us in a number of areas, not just financially. But it's important that our work also be filtered through the priorities of this strategic plan. So it's important that we, as a group, as a committee, have a handle on the strategic plan and what the upcoming priorities are. The third area of our charge pertains to the general operating budget itself. I mean, that's the bulk of our work, is providing input into that budget. So we need to understand all of its major components, as well as the key drivers to the general operating budget. And then there are another number of ancillary topics that drive and affect that budget. And our work was, as you pointed out in the chart, not limited to these, but those topics include things like enrollment trends, because enrollment and how many students we have enrolled directly affects the revenue we receive from the state. Academic service priorities, as outlined in the strategic plan, and what new facilities or programs need to be implemented, and how will that affect the budget. Staffing methods, because that makes up 86% of our budget. We need to make sure that we staff tightly, and it's coupled to the enrollment trends. Compensation and benefits related to that payroll expense, including health costs. Bond projects. So we've got a $663 million bond project we're in the middle of. We've got a lot of new programs coming online. There's ancillary costs that affect our budget ongoing into future years from those bond initiatives. The fifth part of our charge is the bulk of our work, and that's to come up with recommendations to you, the board, that support this strategic plan, including additions, reductions, or deletions to the budget. And it's important, again, that those are aligned to the strategic plan. In addition, we need to make sure that we look for operational efficiencies to see where we can save money or where programs, in order to implement new programs, we need to evaluate existing programs to see where, what we've outgrown and what could be cut. Anything that we recommend could be deferred to a future-year budget, eliminated, or outsourced. Okay? And then finally, the last part of our charge is the reason we're here tonight, and that is to provide consensus reports to you on our recommendations and findings, and to do that annually or more frequently as deemed necessary. So as Cindy mentioned, we met six times. We tackled a lot of big, weighty issues. School finance is very complex, as you guys all know. I'm preaching to the choir, but we covered, the new format really gave us time to dive deep in each of those and not just skim the surface, and have really meaningful conversations on each of those, and identify the challenges and issues facing the district in regard to those. Then, when we wrapped up in December, we came back in January, and we had two work sessions. And one was to get on paper a set of challenges facing our budget on each of those core topics, and then to identify the solutions, which makes up the bulk of the recommendations that we're making to you guys tonight. Okay? So as I said, we kind of took our work and put it into seven different buckets. Front and center was the general operating budget itself, and getting a real strong understanding of all its major components, and what are the key drivers to that budget. The other topics included things like Texas school finance and the legislative environment. We were actually meeting during the last legislative session. Property values and property tax rates, which drive our revenue, our strategic plan and its importance to the budget. And then we also looked at a lot of those KPIs to, and compared them to our surrounding districts and other districts of similar demographic makeup. Those important metrics to give us a measure of how competitive we are versus the other districts out there. Then we looked at enrollment trends. We, it's no secret that enrollment's down in the district. We took a lot of time to look at why that is and brainstorm in ways that we can counter that. And then tightly coupled to enrollment is staffing and compensation, which again makes up 86% of our budget. So we looked at those six drivers to the budget, and really how they're all interrelated and affect the general budget itself. Okay? Once we did that, we had the two work sessions that I mentioned. The first one, where we ID'd all of the challenges for each of those topics I just mentioned. And then, in the second one, we really rolled our sleeves up, and we set out to find solutions to those challenges, so that we could present those as recommendations to you, the board. So let's go through, I'll step you through the data that was, the highlight of the data that was presented on each topic, the key challenge that we identified for that topic, and then we'll get to our recommendations. Okay? So the first one was the general operating budget itself. The key thing to realize there is that our, there are two rates that make up our property taxes. The key one being the maintenance and operation rate, which is pegged at $1.04. Okay? The only way to go higher is if we were to go out to the voters in what's called a tax ratification election. State aid is declining from the state, and it's not really directly correlated to increasing property values by the way of, the way the state funding formulas work. That was kind of a shocker to you, and I'll go in that in more detail in later topics. Payroll, as I mentioned, makes up 86% of the general operating budget. We were projected to have an $18.7 million deficit this year. It looks like we might be able to make that up this year, but we have budget deficits projected for the next four years. I mean, you take a look at what that looks like, we had about a $29 million differential last year, and about a $20 million differential between actual, it looks like actual, and what was projected. But you see going forward, we're quickly moving out of our margin of error on our operating deficits that we're projecting. And barring any miracle, we're going to be left with eating a fund balance or having to make cuts in the classroom. Okay? So that obviously, this was a no-brainer. The declining revenue and projected deficits for the foreseeable future are unsustainable. So that's the challenge we identified going forward with the operating budget that needed to be addressed. Okay? The second topic we looked at was the school finance system and the legislative environment. This last legislative session, there were a number of items in bills that were proposed. Fortunately, most everything didn't make it out into the governor's desk, but property tax reform was a key issue, and it's a key issue now. It's the cornerstone of the governor's reelection campaign, and there's been a lot of talk about property taxes and how that relates to school finance. The key thing to realize, you know, again, once we went through the way school finance works, is the inverse relationship between state aid and our property values and how the game is rigged. Our revenue's fixed, no matter if our property values increase or not. There was no new funding appropriate by the last legislative session, and early word from our consultants down in Austin is the interim school finance commission, we really shouldn't be crossing our fingers too much on that one. I mean, it's still early. Anything could happen, but planning for the future, we shouldn't assume anything's going to change. Okay? So the challenge in this topic was the state of Texas funding for public education is inadequate. It's rigged, and it's at risk of declining in the current political environment, especially if property tax, some of the more deleterious property tax ideas get enacted. Okay? So to give you an idea of how rigged the system is on school finance, I'll use the analogy of my favorite playground equipment, the seesaw. So let's say we have a low year in property taxes. Well, the total revenue we generate is made up of not just our property tax we collect, but also our state aid. And together, that makes up the revenue that's guaranteed by the funding formula, which is set and fixed. But what does that mean if our property taxes go up, like they have been doing? Well, it's inversely related. So as our property taxes go up, the other side of the seesaw goes down, and we get less state aid, and our total revenue from the funding formula stays the same. So it doesn't matter if our property taxes go down or if property taxes go up, the revenue is fixed. And not only that, it's fixed at a set amount that hasn't grown with inflation. I think it's pretty much been set, pegged at 2006. In fact, there's things in the funding formula that were set back in the 80s, when I was getting out of college, so not to date myself. So that's just the sad fact that we're dealing with here. So people are screaming about property tax relief, but not only that is, you know, the legislature is just using the increased property taxes as their own ATM. And in fact, I think in the current biennium, there's $3 million of our property taxes that we're paying for school that have been diverted for other uses by the state. And as a taxpayer and as a parent, that just outrages me. It's, I'm furious when I see that. The system's broken, and it has to be fixed. So all of this, of course, is related to the property values and the property tax rates. So as we said, as our property values increase, our state aid actually decreases. But looking at the projections going forward, I know Mr. Hogg heard one of our esteemed judges say that the state was counting on a projected increase of about 14% over the next couple of years. Cindy, being a lot more conservative, we're guessing between 4% and 5% each year in terms of growth, which is still a significant growth rate for property values, but again, doesn't really help us much. Our MNO tax rate is set at $1.04. It can only be increased with, through a tax ratification election. Okay? So the challenge here is in order to support the current strategic plan and continue quality opportunities that we've made for our students, like our Career Tech Center and all these wonderful programs that are coming online, more revenues needed. Okay? But at $1.04, we are maxed out. Okay? The pressure's building, and something needs to be done. We don't have a lot of options open to us, though. However, given the current political environment, it's going to be a public relations challenge to educate voters on the need for an increased tax. Okay? That's a big challenge. The next topic, I won't spend too much time on. Strategic plan has been a wonderful thing for this district. Thank you for the board for being forward-thinking back in our old one and continuing it forward. It's really given a disciplined approach for the whole district, especially for setting our budget priorities, which kind of almost made this committee feel a little useless the last couple of years, because the strategic plan did such a great job of setting those priorities for us. There was really little left for us to do. However, it's a new day with FFC 2.0. There's a lot of challenges ahead, and fortunately, with the revamp in the committee, we're, hopefully, you'll see our recommendations coming up in a little bit, we're able to tackle those challenges. So again, strategic plan, it might, given the priorities and objectives, the academic achievement, college readiness, and some of the priorities, might create a need for additional facilities or capital needs, knowing that we're probably in the early stages of doing facilities assessment. We know that there might be a bond coming down the pike. We just need to keep that in mind, but that didn't really raise to a challenge versus the other challenge in the other topics. But we were cognizant that whatever we came up with a solution, had to include the strategic plan and know that there's a possibility that strategic plan might dictate some capital needs. Okay? The next topic we looked at were the comparison data, looking at those KPIs that are important measures of the health of our district, especially compared to our surrounding districts that we compete for resources with, as well as similar districts in size and demographics. Okay? There are two KPIs that stood out. The first one is that we spend less per student than the state average in our 12 comparison districts, as you see here on the chart. Okay? We are a lean, mean, fighting machine financially. Okay? We do more with less than our other districts. Now, there's, you know, we're really good at controlling what we spend, yes, but some of that is also dictated by the inequities in the funding formulas, and that we just get less than a lot of those other districts. The other KPI that we looked at is we spend, almost without exception, except for Katie, we spend more in the classroom than any of the other districts. Okay? So those are two great things to be proud of, right? But they're also double-edged swords, because if we're looking to cut money, we're already operating pretty efficient, right? There's not a lot of money outside of the classroom to cut. That makes our job difficult. Okay? So we could sit here and go through the budget and try to find cuts, but I can tell you, based on those two KPIs alone, that's not how we're going to solve our way out of this projection of deficits in the next four years. Okay? So the next topic was enrollment trends. Enrollment is really, one of the other ways to increase our revenue is if we have more students enrolled in the district. That's the way the funding formulas work. Unfortunately, we've seen a decline since the 2012, 2013. Overall, district-wide, it's been about 4.3%, but the greatest decline has occurred at the elementary level. There are a number of factors. Some of that is demographics, but a lot of it is increased competition. We have a whole lot of charter schools now that we didn't have a few years ago. Our surrounding districts did a really good job of marketing to us. In fact, I didn't bring it up here, but I get flyers every day from charter schools and from surrounding districts. Grand Prairie used to tout their CTC center, which was state-of-the-art, until they met ours. And we stepped it up. We've stepped it up competitively. We provide great programs of choice now, and I think there's a delay in the word spreading and parents realizing just how great it is here. So that's, accounts for some of the decline, and we're starting to see that reverse. But if you look at the elementary just in the last couple of years, it's declined 5.1%. Okay? So that's pretty troubling, and that's a big challenge. So how do we, and I really think we've done a lot of great things with Corey Academy and Jones, the two fine arts. the two fine arts academies, providing programs of choice, eliminating the barriers so that parents can send their students to the schools of choice. But we've got to improve the public perception of AISD, especially at the elementary level with those parents. And so how do we identify those programs that attract and maintain students at that level? And second is, how do we eliminate the barriers? We've, we've eliminated transfer fees. Is there any other ways that we can eliminate barriers to enrollment from surrounding districts? Et cetera. Okay? So finally, the last topic we looked at was staffing and compensation. Success? Well, staffing and compensation makes up eighty-six percent. And again, part of the problem on the enrollment trend is we've gotta provide a great product. Well, how do you, what's the most effective thing we can do to affect the classroom and student outcomes? And that's hire quality teachers and attract and retain quality employees. And also invest in leadership, because we know that employee happiness depends on the leaders that they report to, right? We're, we are on the cutting edge in terms of investing in leadership. So, those two things are important. But again, eighty-six percent of our budget is made up of staffing compensation. And a key thing to realize is a one percent raise, you know, to keep them happy? Not, I'm not saying, wait, let me back up. I'm not saying one percent raise keeps them happy, but, but as a metric to keep in mind, a one percent raise is now equal to three point nine million dollars a year ongoing. So that's a challenge, right? And we know the board, part of their policy realizes, if we're going to be a, a district of choice, we've got to attract the right talent, and we've gotta pay competitively. So I, kudos to you guys for making that part of your former policy. But that's a challenge. But we think, given the environment, we must pay competitively. It's not an option. It's, that's the last thing that needs to be cut, is all we're saying here. Is that we've got to pay, we continue to pay competitively to attract and retain highly qualified staff, even within the environment. Okay? So those are all the challenges that we identified. So then we set out at coming up with our recommendations, which were solutions to those challenges. And I only had one set of requirements for my committee. The recommendations needed to be big, they needed to be bold, and they needed to be broad. They needed to be big ideas, they needed to be bold. Let's not be afraid, let's go out and do what needs to be done. And they needed to be broad, meaning they needed to tackle as many of the challenges that we identified as possible. So we were looking for quality over quantity. And, and I, and, and based on the recommendations that they were able to come up with, I think we succeeded. So let's get it to them. The first recommendation addresses the declining enrollment in elementary specifically. And we recommend investing in the overall elementary experience, including the facilities, the programs we offer in elementary, programs of choice more, services, personnel, and of course, marketing to counter the declining enrollment trends. Some of the ideas we talked at length back when we were looking at this topic, we had a lot of talk about full day and pre, uh, expanded pre-K offerings at the elementary level. Very expensive proposition. We didn't come into any definitive agreement on that. But also things, you know, I just got another flyer, I mentioned, constantly getting flyers from charter schools. Had a flyer from Harmony touting their elementary STEM Academy. Sounds like a good idea to me. If I had an elementary student, I, I would be really looking long and hard at Harmony for my kid, as you guys know. Other ideas we came up with is reimagining spaces at our elementary levels for twenty-first century learning, for collaborative learning, for STEM. Things that we're already doing, but what else could we be doing at the elementary? Again, foreign language offerings, but also look at helping out the teachers, and again, providing a better product within the classroom, and, and investing in that leadership so that parents can see those tangibles and see that they are getting a, a better product here in, in AISD. But as I said before, marketing is also key, because parents need to know the grass is greener here in AISD, not on the other side of the fence. Okay? Be that a charter or be it another district. Okay? And it is, things like Jones Academy, things like Corey Academy, we're doing great things here. And there's, I, I think we're experiencing a delay in parents realizing that. In fact, talking to Ms. Humble's at Butler, we, she was seeing a lot of parents go to Harmony, go to this charter school, go to this private school, go up to Veridian. Those parents are all coming back now. They realize the grass isn't greener. So, yes, we have challenges, we continue need to invest, and we need to continue to put a competitive product out there in the market. Okay, our second recommendation is we didn't really have a, a chance to look at cost efficiencies throughout the district. I know Mr. Horn and his staff, he's got a staff of professionals who are very knowledgeable and are constantly doing creative things, so look at how to schedule janitorial services effectively, looking at route automation for our buses, and getting the biggest bang from our transportation dollar, and making sure we're paying absolutely rock bottom for utility rates. We didn't really have the time to go in and do that, nor we felt all of that was in good hands. So, but, when we're facing budget deficits coming forward, we've gotta do our due diligence and look at that. Now, given that this is a, a standing committee now, I'm sure that's, looking at cost efficiencies is a topic that we're gonna tackle going forward in the, in the near future. Not something we tackled directly this time, but, but we still, we still have to try, right? So, that did make it into a formal recommendation. But again, we, I wanna caution you, because of those two KPIs that I shared earlier, we, because we spend less outside of the classroom than any other district, and we spend less than any other district, meaningful savings are gonna be tough to find. Okay? But we still have to look for those opportunities. Okay, our third recommendation, again, reiterates what I've just, I said earlier. The district must continue to provide competitive compensation and invest in leadership development and attract and retain highly qualified staff. Okay? It's not an option, or that should be the option of last resort if we're looking to make cuts. Again, we wanna reiterate how important that is, again, to providing a quality product for our parents and students. Okay, all right. Didn't mean to go forward. The last one is the biggest, the boldest, and the broadest recommendation we can make. So let's jump into it. We recommend the board decrease the INS tax rate, which is the part of our tax rate that we pay for our bonds and our, our interest and principal on our bonds. And likewise, increase the MNO tax rate, the maintenance and operation rate, by equal amounts, resulting in no change to the overall tax rate. So what we're proposing is known as a TRE swap. So we're just swapping our INS rate for an increase in MNO rate. Which, again, if we're maxed out at a dollar four, to go higher, we have to trigger tax ratification election. But some districts, you know, we, we're allowed by law to go from a dollar four, thirteen cents up to a dollar seventeen. A lot of districts have done that, just gone all the way to the top. That's not what we're proposing. What we're proposing is that we do a swap for equal amount, but in addition, we need to preserve our INS rate on top of the swap to allow for any future capital needs, again, without raising the INS rate. We wanna be tax rate neutral. Again, I'll stop short of making the mistake a former president made in saying, read my lips. But I will say, it's our recommendation as a committee in this political environment that we try to provide property tax relief to our citizens and still do all the wonderful things we need to do, but we need to, we need to remain tax rate neutral. Okay? So, I'm a visual person. For those watching at home who might be scared of what I'm saying, let me show you visually what we're talking about. So, the total property tax rate that we pay in Arlington is made up of two separate rates. One is the interest and sinking, which pays off our, our bonds. And the other is our maintenance and operation, which pays to keep the lights on and pays the teacher's salary and all the other maintenance and operating needs that we have as a district. The MNO rate is pegged right now at a dollar four, and it can't go any higher. But what we're proposing is that we actually decrease the INS rate, because our property taxes have gone up, we are generating more money, and we're paying off those bonds quicker. We have room in our INS rate that we can decrease it without causing any problem of paying off our bonds. And once we do that, we can raise the MNO rate the exact same amount. So the net result is our property taxes stay the same. Okay? In addition to that, we wanna save flexibility there for any future capital needs. So that if we need to issue a new bond, we can do so. And again, the tax rate stays the same. Okay? So we can continue all the great things as outlined in our strategic plan. We continue the transformation of this district. We can continue to put an even better product on the market that parents are gonna wanna move here for, for their children, and for the opportunities we're providing those children. Let me be, you know, we try not to be prescriptive in our recommendation. These guys are the experts, and talking with the people who handle our bonds, they know what we can, you know, so we, we didn't come out and say, we want to do a TRE for six cents. Raise our, I, our MNO rate by six cents, or thirteen cents. As I mentioned before, we don't wanna go that high. We wanna, it's important that we maintain that tax rate neutrality. So we're guessing it's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of four to six cents. But that's gonna be for Ms. Powell and her staff to determine what the appropriate level is to generate the revenue we need while still maintaining tax rate neutrality. Okay? I told you that was the biggest, the boldest, and the baddest. Are there any questions?
Trustees with questions? Mr. Hibbs?
Appreciate that, President Reich. David, thank you and your committee. I mean, you guys worked diligently, and this is a lot of work. I mean, it's a lot of work, and there's some big, bold recommendations in that. And some things that this board needs to hear. Quite frankly, you know, when you look at the different aspects of this particular, or the situation that we're in because of state funding, we can't anticipate that there's gonna be a change in funding. That would, that would require a lot of different things of happening, and really, that won't even come about for another year and a half, two years, when we would get new elected officials that potentially would look at serious school finance changes, the way that the system is set up. One of the keys that you brought up, and it needs to be heard and hammered, and we need to continue to follow through with, is, is really going to the forefront with the focus to address declining enrollment. I mean, one of the things that we have to do is that our district is, is doing so many things right with the CTC Center, with Jones and Corey Academies. That messaging needs to get out. There needs to be a messaging. What we're finding out is these second graders at Corey and Jones are speaking real Mandarin Chinese. It's not a work page that's going out every two weeks. That messaging, we've got to get that out and, and draw people with, back into our district. And that should be as strategic as a focus as we have of anything. And we, we all need to hearken that call. When it comes to some of your recommendations, when you talk about saying, you know, being able to retain, you know, recruit and retain, retain, you know, solid teachers, solid employees within our district. And the expectation that with that, you, you maintain certain pay levels without having that increased funding, that's a hard thing to do. Because we've already seen what three years' worth of deficits could, going forward, can do against our fund balance, and then ultimately, that's reoccurring expenses. It doesn't just replenish itself at the same time that we're paying out salaries. So when you, when you say in that, that recommendations, you know, in recruiting and retaining and keeping a, a, a pay scale that's going to keep our professionals within our district, that's a tough thing for a board when they're looking out at deficits. When you're talking about, you know, you just, you know, I, I just calculated, two percent raise, if we move towards that this year, that's another million three. Or, I mean, I'm sorry, seven point eight million, seven point eight million. But in TA staffing, and, you know, that was one of the recommendations that was talking about TA staffing. If you just did that by two TAs at thirty-four campuses, that's where the million three comes in. I mean, an additional. So these, this deficit begins to balloon. And so, you know, our focus has to go back to then, how do we cover these things? Because, you know, you want to be able to be responsible, but you have to be physically responsible as well as being responsible to your, you know, your employees. And also ensuring that we're giving the quality education. Other things that could be looked at then is a decrease in staffing, or just, and so that's, that's another option that has to be looked at. I know back, Mr. Hogg and Mr. Reich and myself, when we had to go through that twenty eleven
That was my baptism on this committee.
We were, we were talking about very seriously, are there some programs that we're offering within the district that we have to cut? You know, you don't ever wanna have to think about that, but there are, there are certain programmings that we're, that we do have going forward that we just don't have very many children in. And is that, that's costing, so, all these things have to come together. That's why I think that first and foremost, we have to look at how do we increase our enrollment? Because through increasing our enrollment, we increase funding. And that would be, I, I'm glad that I see it coming from the Financial Futures Committee, because that should be a charge that we all need to be focused in on. The, you know, we do have the other options, as you mentioned, before us, and those things are going to have to be studied long and hard. Again, you, you all took on a very serious task, and, and one that I can tell you the board appreciates with your frankness and candor. And going forward, we're going to rely on you even more. I was, that's why I was so happy that so many people re-upped to say that you're willing to serve a two-year term now, you know? And so with that, I will just, again, thank you and, you know, maintain the, bearing the flag that enrollment is something that we've got to seriously, seriously address within our district.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Well said. Are there other trustees that have questions or comments? No? Okay. With that, uh, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, uh, committee members, uh, out there, uh, that are here tonight as well as those that are not with us. The amount of data that you all have had to digest and understand and then really break that down into what, what does that look like for challenges for us going forward to then come up with recommendations, it's really quite remarkable. I, I love the FFC 2.0, uh, approach. It's good, good. Definitely a, a better strategic way of looking at what our problems could be, maybe are, and what, what that looks like down the road so that we can get a handle on it now. As Mr. Hibbs said, tough, tough conversations to be had, lots of things to look at. So, I absolutely appreciate your work, your efforts, your, your commitment and those that have renewed, uh, on the committee. It will be a lot of work, a lot more discussions, uh, to be had. There is no easy, uh, easy, uh, fix to any of this. The recommendations, it, it's, it's, it's easy to come up with, with ideas on, oh yeah, we, we should do this, that and the other with, uh, TAs and different programs. And we'd all love to do it, but we do have a finite, uh, situation and, uh, uh, looking at 86% and that ebbs and flows, but it only grows closer to 90, that's how most districts are, uh, with payroll. It doesn't, like you said, it doesn't leave a lot of room. We can cut and cut and cut in that 10% or 12% or 14%, but, uh, it, it's not going to fix us long-term. It's not going to make us whole. And we are, as a board and in a community, one that is, I think, very fiscally minded and always concerned with not drawing, uh, to a deficit budget conclusion. And, uh, uh, we have, within this year, I think maybe we're, we're a little bit saved, but I'll tell you, for, for me as one trustee, it was not an easy, and an, an easy vote to say yes to a deficit budget. It was the, the first one, uh, since my first year on, uh, which I personally had my foot down, if you will, that we're not doing that. That's not how to run or be good stewards, uh, for our community. And yet, here we are with the great leadership of Cindy Powell as our CFO and, uh, her, uh, financial staff and all of our campus staff and teachers doing everything they can to really look at every, every corner, every, every rock, under, underneath every rock. There's only so much you can do. Uh, so, I, I appreciate the big, bold, uh, broad recommendation and, and consideration. It, it's certainly one that, that we'll, we'll have to entertain and, and discuss as, as time goes forward. With that said, that's not the end-all, be-all either. That doesn't fix it. So, true finance formula reform is what's, what's needed ultimately. Are we going to get that anytime soon? No, you're absolutely right. We're, uh, as Mr. Hibbs said, uh, election cycles plus people going, if that even happens, don't know what's going to happen there. Uh, so, uh, be, be prepared for, uh, more work and, and more conversations. Thank you for your, your commitment, uh, to, to our students first and foremost, because that's what it's all about. So, I don't see any other, uh, last call? Any other comments, questions? Oh, I knew somebody would have something. Go ahead, Ms. Mason.
I couldn't remember what button to push. There we go. Thank you. Just very short and quickly, I just wanted to add, as, uh, my colleague, uh, John Hibbs stated, that the increase in enrollment will bring in additional funding, and that's what we're talking about here. But I also feel like as myself and a community that truly believes in what AISD offers our kids, that increased enrollment also increases the opportunities for that many more students to be able to take advantage of the opportunities that we do have here in AISD and the great teachers we have, the great programs we're offering. So, that marketing piece for me personally is huge. So, I'm very excited in being able to take a real deep dive into that recommendation on how to get the word out of all the great things that are happening here to help increase our enrollment.
Well said, well said. I agree. We are, our district is open for business and great opportunity. All right, well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Wilbanks and, and committee. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is a discussion item. This is a bond update regarding the hub target. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Rush. And this evening, we'd like to present, uh, bond updates specifically with our hub, uh, participation and our hub efforts, uh, in this current bond. So, I'll ask Cindy to share information related to that.
President Rush, board members, Dr. Kavasos, again, good evening. We do want to share with you information about, um, our current bond program and about hub participation in that bond program. When we talk about hub, what we're talking about is a historically underutilized business that has a very specific, uh, meaning. The state defines that, um, as you see here on the slide. It's actually kind of a, a two-pronged, uh, definition. Has to do with both size of an entity and the ownership of that entity. In Texas Administrative Code, there is, uh, a section that actually references to, uh, Small Business Administration Codes, uh, that defines the cap, if you will, of revenue, of annual receipts, gross receipts, uh, on various types of industries for qualifying an entity as being a hub. And again, that's step one. And then, the second part of that is ownership. And so, uh, for a hub business, at least 51% of the business has to be, um, owned and operated by an individual who is, uh, Asian, Pacific American, Black American, Hispanic American, Native American, American woman and/or service-disabled veteran, uh, who resides in Texas and actually has an active role in running the business. So, a two-part test there. So, remind everyone, uh, with our current bond package, um, we have, uh, um, four parts of that bond package. The total package is $663 million, uh, and, uh, of that total, $552 million is in the area of facilities. That's where we concentrated our, our hub efforts, and that's what we'll be speaking about tonight. So, as, uh, again, a little bit of background, um, in 2014, uh, as we were actually passing, uh, the 2014 bond package, uh, we had extensive conversations with the board about how we would go about, uh, procuring, soliciting architects and contractors. One of the things that this board was very clear about was a desire to encourage participation of those hub vendors, uh, those historically underutilized businesses. A lot of our conversation centered around, well, you know, what's an appropriate, uh, percentage to achieve on these projects? What had we been recognizing? Administration explained that prior to that point, we had not tracked hub participation in any, uh, construction project. So, we did not have data on which we could, uh, to share at that point. We did make a commitment at that time, uh, that we would, um, begin to track the information and report it back to the board and use it and evaluate it as we went through the bond program to make decisions about, uh, uh, how we might further, uh, increase that encouragement, if you will, of our hub, um, contractors and architects. So, uh, we accept hub certifications from three different organizations, including the State of Texas, uh, Hub Program, the DFW Minority Supplier Development Council, and the North Central Texas Regional Certification Agency. So, when I say that we accept those certifications, uh, what you're going to hear in just a minute is that we actually, uh, require, uh, design professionals, whether it's an architect, or contractors, to present to us as part of the documents they submit during a, a procurement process, uh, information stating, uh, their commitment to having subcontractors, their own subcontractors, uh, participate in the project with them. And they have to submit to us, uh, these documents that show that those subcontractors are certified through one of these agencies. So, throughout the 2014 bond program, we're now in, uh, really in the beginning stage of, of year four, that, that bond program. We have taken a number of actions, uh, to increase our outreach, to encourage hub participation, and then, uh, to follow through on that commitment that we would track the information and share it out with the board and the community. So, uh, as we put out RFQs for architects and as we put out RFPs for contractors, um, in those evaluation processes, we award points, uh, for a hub commitment. And again, we're looking for, uh, the commitment of the architect for his or her subconsultants, or we're looking, uh, at the commitment of the contractor for their subcontractors, that tier two, if you will. Uh, that's where the bulk of construction dollars are spent. Uh, that's where you cast the widest net, and that puts everybody on equal playing field in terms of the expectation. So, uh, we publish information in our RFQ documents and our RFP documents saying, uh, here is, uh, one of the things on which we will consider, uh, you as we make this solicitation and we require those, uh, who are submitting proposals to us or submitting qualifications to us to tell us in their proposal what percentage they are committing to and then, uh, who they anticipate that they will be using as their subcontractors. So, that's on both architects and contractors. For then, the contractors on the, the construction side of it, uh, we take that, uh, another step forward. When we bring in the finalists, uh, for interviews, uh, we ask the firms to tell us, um, how they recruit, uh, hub subcontractors, uh, what they do to mentor them, uh, and, uh, and what they do to increase their own hub participation. And we actually score them. You know, when we do interviews, all the points are scored or all the questions are scored. And so, there's another element there where we are scoring, uh, the contractors on their commitment, uh, to a hub program. We require our architects and our contractors to submit information every month along with their pay applications, and the pay application's an invoice, but they, uh, they submit information with their pay application, uh, to report to us, here's who we've spent money with this month. Here are the subcontractors we've spent money with and here's how much we've spent. And they're submitting that information specifically for their hub contractors or subcontractors, rather. We then take that information, we compile it, and then we report it out to the board. We report it out to CBOC and we post it on our website. In terms of our own outreach efforts, um, we have, uh, through our purchasing department, we participate in several different, uh, opportunities to help educate companies on how they can do business with us. Uh, we do that in a joint meeting monthly with the City of Arlington on how companies can do business with both the City of Arlington and, uh, and Arlington ISD. Uh, we also host, uh, contractor symposiums. We do that periodically. We have one scheduled for March the 9th. We will use that opportunity to put out information about our Phase Four construction projects. Those projects are now in the final stages with our architects for developing construction documents, and we will begin putting those projects out for bid. There are 12 of them. Uh, we'll start going out for bid in March, probably March through June, and we will use this particular contractor symposium, uh, to share information about the work with, uh, all interested parties. We always have the architects, uh, participate in those with us. Uh, they bring the construction documents and then the contractors have opportunity to kind of go table to table to see what particular projects are out there and when we inspect those to go out on the street for bid. And it helps them in their planning, uh, to know what they can commit to and what we've got coming down the pike. Uh, and so, those have been very effective for us. We've been very pleased with those. We've also participated in a couple of, uh, annual expos, one being the Asian or Pan-Asian Business Expo and the other being the DFW Minority Supplier Development Council Hardhat Construction Expo. Uh, those are annual events, uh, that target minority, uh, contractors and subcontractors. And we purchase booths or tables there and have information, uh, again, about our programs and how to do business with us. Uh, the DFW Minority Supplier Development Council has their next, um, annual event is coming up in March, so, uh, that, that will be happening shortly. And then, with, anytime we put out an RFQ for architects or an RFP for contractors, we send those notices of proposals or qualification requests out to all the chambers and ask them to send the information on to their own membership. So, we've tried to cast a wide net, uh, as we go through our solicitation process. All of those efforts to date have yielded, uh, the results you see here. Uh, this is just the total, the, the bottom total off of a report that summarizes our hub activity, uh, from the beginning of the bond program up through December 31st of 17. And to date, for the contracts that have actually been issued and executed, uh, our architects and our contractors have committed hub participation of almost 25%. That 24.46% you see here. In terms of what's actually been paid against those contracts to date, um, we've had, uh, of the total payments, 17 and a half percent of those have been to hub subcontractors and hub subconsultants. This is a number that will ebb and flow throughout a construction project depending on when a hub subcontractor is involved and actually doing work on the project and then when we're billed for this. In this particular report, we've had, uh, several contracts that had just been issued and so the commitments reflected on the left-hand side as part of that 24.46%. And we've only gotten maybe one pay-up on them at the most. And so, we're just in the very early stages of, um, of work on these projects. And so, we have a long way to go on them. And so, as those subcontractors, uh, those hub subcontractors come onsite and start doing their piece of the work, you'll see that number come back up. In the meantime then, we also have our Phase Five, our Phase Four construction work and our Phase Five construction projects that we'll be letting, and they also will have hub commitments and, and hub, uh, actual participation. Um, I've said from the beginning, we won't know for absolute certain the outcome until all the projects are done. Because again, it kind of depends on where you are in, in a project as to, um, actually what you're going to pay out and recognize on hub participation. So, uh, once the entire 2014 bond program is over and we've closed out those contracts, we'll see, uh, where we actually land. I really expect that, uh, what we're going to find is that we will wind up, uh, probably a little above the 20% mark, at least. The projects that we are bidding out right now, most of them are renovation projects and we have seen some pretty significant, uh, hub commitments come in, in the last round of, uh, of contractors, uh, contractor bids that we've, uh, let. And I think we'll see that continue because this is work that, uh, that is, it's not necessarily ground up and we seem to see more small companies involved in these renovation projects and that's where we also see a lot of hub participation. So, I think we'll continue to see that grow. Now, I, I will say that, you know, uh, again, because we didn't track this data prior to the 2014 bond program, I can't stand here and say definitively, but anecdotally, I think in, in what we have observed over the last three and a half, four years has been that, um, these efforts have yielded a positive result in participation of hub subcontractors, hub subconsultants in our program. And I think it's something that we're very pleased with and I think that we'll continue to see that evolve as the program itself evolves. So, um, with that, um, I think that what, what we know today is, is we've, uh, developed this body of work, if you will, and, and gathered data that now then I think that it would be appropriate, uh, to come back to this and determine, uh, do we, should we set, uh, formalize an actual policy, uh, through board policy on hub, uh, hub participation, including a target, uh, participation? And so, to do that, there, there's a lot that actually goes into, uh, establishing a policy of this sort. Uh, there has to be a pretty extensive legal review because this is something that, uh, has a lot of, uh, of intricacies to it. a lot of, of intricacies to it. One of the key things is a requirement for a disparity study. Federal law says if you create any kind of a program that is based on race, you have to be able to prove the need or the disparity that exists before you set forth that policy, and then your policy has to be very specific to address what was found in that report. So a disparity study is a very key part of actually formalizing a policy on a hub program. So we would need to, to work through that and poss, and have a disparity study done if this is the route we want to go. And then looking at the impact on operations, there's a lot of administration that goes along with a program like this. That is one thing that has been a bit of a challenge for us even during the, the past four years, is the work to compile those reports that we report out quarterly and to maintain that information. And so that's something that if we are going to do anything any differently than what we're doing right now, we'll have to have a conversation about what that impact's going to be and how we best address that. So with that, we'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you very much for the information, Ms. Powell. Looks like we have questions from Mrs. Mays. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, for the presentation. Also, thank you very much for listening to the recommendation and/or concern of the board based off of information coming from the community. I truly appreciate the fact that you said that y'all would look into, starting to track, and that you've actually done that, and even gone farther into making sure that not only are we tracking, but we're actually physically going out and making sure the information we're receiving is accurate. I appreciate that. Thank you. Two questions. You talked about coming back after this review, but then you also stated that you would really need to wait until the end of all the payouts for this current bond before we could actually go into this next process after the three things are gone?
I, I don't think we have to wait until this bond program is over to look at doing anything differently possibly with the policy. We will not know precisely the exact hub participation that we will recognize for the 2014 bond program until all those projects are complete. That's where I was.
Okay. But it doesn't have to necessarily stall the process?
No.
Okay. And then my second question is, on the disparity study, you talked about that that's required to look at the disparity for race, but in this case, is it also going to consider the disparity for women and/or the disabled veterans? Or is it a combination?
It's a combination of all of that. When you look at creating a hub program, part of the state's definition of hub is a, a company if it meets the, the gross revenue caps that are set forth by the Small Business Administration Code, and if it has ownership, it could be, could include a woman-owned business or disabled vet business, that meets the state definition of a hub along with the other ethnic minority ownership groups.
Okay. So it's not just race?
Correct.
Just making sure.
Right, right. And again, that's consistent with the state definition of a hub, a historically underutilized business.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Any other trustees, questions, comments? And I don't see any, so I will just close with, thank you for all, all of the work, the, the thoughtful approach that you've consistently taken. We have, through our strategic plan, worked through data-driven decisions versus what we feel or emotions or what we think should happen. And as that may result in extra time or even some frustrations with, with different individuals or groups, the, the net result, I think, is, is, is better, better for us, better for the district, better for the students. So thank you for taking the time. Look forward to having that information looked at, whatever that may be, that we'll go back through our Governance Committee to assess that, seeing there is policy included in there. So thanks in advance, Governance Committee, for that work. And Ms. Powell and, and your team for tracking the, the information, the data. We are steps light-years ahead, I would dare say, to other districts. Goals are easy to set, targets are easy to set, but actually following through to see if we're walking the talk is a whole different story. And you're certainly accumulating the data to support walking that talk. So thank you very much, and look forward to more information in the future.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So with that, it is 8:18 PM, and that is the end of the open session, work session items on our agenda. We will now move into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071, 551.074 for the purposes of personnel, legal counsel related to superintendent midyear review and goal-setting. Thank you very much.